Call to order, the regular business meeting of the New Market School Board. Catherine, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Catherine. I will, at this point, open the floor for public comment. If anyone would like to make any comment, please proceed to the mic.
Good evening, I'm Amy Rossi. I have actually two comments, and the first one's about the calendar. I know that this is a very premature stage for the calendar, and that there's a lot of things to be discussed, but I just wanted to mention that it looks like November, we as educators struggle with the time between Thanksgiving and Christmas and making sure that our kids are as engaged as they can be, especially when they know that Christmas is coming, or whatever holiday days they celebrate. And I'm just a little concerned that Thursday, not Thursday, November looks a little too concentrated with non-school days.
Oh, you mean like no school November?
Yeah, but there's some. And the other thing I would like to say is a community member, educator, and parent of two children who went through our school system, it's very exciting to see that on the agenda is one-on-one technology, and looking forward to hearing about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Any more public comment? Seeing no one else, I will close that portion, and we will move to the report section. Catherine, would you like to give your student report?
Sure. We've got a lot going on with the start of sports this month.
Excellent.
So, girls' basketball won their first game against PCA on December 5th, 30 to 21, and their next game is going to be home tomorrow against Littleton at 5:30 PM. Boys' basketball also has their first game tomorrow, and it's home against Littleton at 7:00 PM. Boys' hockey have their first game at Goffstown, December 14th, at 7:15 PM, and they have a home game against Keene, December 16th, at 12:45 PM. The junior high girls and boys' basketball had a game today against Ry, and their next games are going to be in Seabrook, December 11th, at 3:30 and 4:45. Junior high boys and girls varsity basketball have their next home game against Epping, and that's going to be Monday, December 11th, from 5:30, or 5:30 for girls, and then 7:00 PM for boys. Indoor track has a meet at UNH, sorry, UNH, and that's going to be Saturday, December 16th, at 9:00 AM. And the first swim meet, which is really exciting, it's going to be at Oyster River Sunday, December 17th, and that's at 8:00 AM. For the elementary school, the book fair is going on this week, and that'll be ending December 9th, and they are still open 8 to 3 on Friday and 9 to 1 on Saturday. On December 19th, any, or, the elementary school has a holiday concert. And then for high school, the staff holiday fair was today, right after school. Tomorrow, the junior/senior high has a throwback dance, and we have our winter concert coming up on Monday, December 18th, at 6:30 PM. We have a P's Items Drive starting on Monday for items to go to veterans and people who are across seas right now, and that'll be stuff like card games, deodorant, and students will bring a list home, depending on what grade they're in. And then Senior Bingo is going to be December 16th, from 12 to 3. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Meredith, would you like to do your superintendent report?
We need a breath after that. That was a lot of preparation.
Thank you, Catherine, very much for the thoroughness.
Yeah, we just made her run up the flight of stairs. Let's see, so there are a few things included in your packet that I just want to touch upon. One of those is an analysis from Reaching Higher New Hampshire. Reaching Higher New Hampshire is a nonprofit agency, bipartisan group that does educational analysis of pending legislation, so this is an analysis of Senate Bill 193, which may be known as sort of the choice bill, or educational voucher bill. So, their modeling, which is a pretty conservative estimate, assuming like a 3% uptake for students and families to participate in that, would show New Market losing about $40,000 in adequacy aid beginning, and then this coming fiscal year. Again, that's pretty consistent, I think, with what we discussed during the budget time, you said maybe seven or eight students, so that $40,000 would be on par with that if this is how it plays out. Whether the Senate bill passes or not, I know there are four bills being developed in the House of a similar nature. So, I know the School Boards Association was present at the Reaching Higher event yesterday, and in speaking with Barrett Christina, their executive director, after that meeting, that they'll be sending out some talking points and information to school boards just to make you aware of the potential impacts. It basically, the concern is, aside from local impacts, that statewide, if you look at the financial impact, Reaching Higher estimates the first year an additional $5.8 million of expenses across the state, and you can see that sort of compounds each year. So, over that five-year period, coming forward, you're looking at about 30, additional $30 million in state education spending. So, again, the question would be, is that intended to be assumed by local communities? Are there other tax proposals potentially out there? Again, those are not for me to weigh in on, but I think it's important that you have this information so you can become informed about that bill. Also in your packet is just a notice from the Department of Environmental Services that we'll be having our, an onsite inspection for AHRA, which is the Asbestos Hazard and Environmental Something Act, that I'm not going to remember right now accurately. So, that will happen in January, and Greg Marles has been working, our facilities director's been working with our principal. We have all of those records here. We've been doing those inspections for a very long time, so we have all the information that we believe they'll need, and we'll take care of that in January. Not in your packet, but just to bring to your attention is that we put out an RFP for on-call electrical services. We're working to bid that with the town, in hopes that we can get sort of improved rates for an electrical vendor. Currently, those are, have been handled separately, so that RFP went out, and proposals and bids are due back December 21st. That is all online. And, let's see, I think Catherine has hit pretty much every event that we have coming up, with the exception of the elementary school concert, which is scheduled for Tuesday, December 19th.
That's the 19th, yep.
And, yeah, I'll kind of leave it there for now. We've got a number of agenda items that I will get to speak to shortly.
Perfect. School Board Committee reports. I'll begin with mine. There was a joint study committee for the health insurance this afternoon. We had a presentation from school choice come, a group, two presenters come and talk about the available plans that they have, and we will have some future meetings in January and beyond to gather more information. It's very beneficial for me to hear the options that our employees are availing themselves of now, and what other things are out there in the marketplace as things change in the whole healthcare world. So, I will keep you guys abreast of things as they come.
Can you talk a little bit, are there in fact choices, in terms of, in terms of...
That's what we're trying to figure out. We're trying to, and we have a couple of, we started with the vendor that we're currently using, and they presented us with some traditional options, and a suite of traditional options, a suite of consumer-driven options. There are two different, two separate suites, and if I misspeak, please correct me. And we're going to have some other companies come, as well as someone who is an independent insurance provider, broker, for lack of a better term, to come talk about a wider marketplace to see what's out there for the employees.
I thought, and I'm sure I was ill-informed, but I thought we were very limited in terms of providers, that the school choice, is that what it's called?
School Care.
School Care.
A school care, when we talked about this last year, was our, if not one and only, pretty close to our one and only. Is there something different now?
So, in your collective bargaining agreement, you have contract language that formed a joint study committee for the union, and the three of us, as appointed by the board, to take a look at those options. Right now, school care is basically the, in essence, the negotiated option. It's not explicit that that's the only option. You know, it certainly has been the provider since 2014 in the district. There was another carrier prior to that, and prior to that, it was another version of Cigna or School Care, under another title. So, certainly, the district has a flexibility to make those changes, but, you know, I think it's something that's done collaboratively, you know, through union and management, to try to come to a health package that everyone is going to be comfortable living with.
That's great. I'm glad, I'm really glad to hear that.
So, yeah, we're in early stages. One of the other things we're looking at is our own data.
Yep.
I guess it'd be the only thing.
Thank you.
To add to that is...
Self-insured, potentially.
It's certainly another option. Yep.
And it was interesting to look at, you know, not employee-specific, but usage trends and things of that nature to help.
It's a very dynamic market.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much. Any other committee reports?
I forwarded something to Kim today. I have the minutes from the Performance Evaluation Committee. We met last week, and we did some comparisons, pro-cons, of several different districts' evaluations, and we'll be working on a plan that we, we have another meeting scheduled. And I was at the Seco School of Technology today for their tour of the Exeter Inn facility.
Oh, great.
To see about the, mostly about the kitchen operations there, and it's a New Market chef who's there.
Was he or she trained at SST?
He was.
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, Kim, facilities, we met as a committee on the 29th of November for an update from the civil engineer and from the architect. Nothing of substance really new to report on that front. Everything is still on budget, on time. Our next meeting is on December 13th, and that's 6 o'clock, Meredith?
Yes.
6 o'clock. So, we'll be going over the HBAC, I think, rate that meeting.
Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, yep. That includes HBAC.
Yep, and so, that, and we're working on a, just bringing us back to the beginning, because we're about probably a month away from wrapping this up. We've scheduled a meeting on January 13th with, joint meeting of the school board and the building committee. You know, the design development process is winding down, and we're, we've put together already a list of, just sort of reminders of where we are, because we want to compare what we set out to do with what the design development processes has produced, you know, just to make sure we check off all the boxes. And we'll be looking at that, too, as well, next week, and have that as sort of a template where we're all together on the 4th, and so we're all comfortable saying, this is what we set out to do, and this did it. And essentially, so, that's where we're at on that.
And Mike, if I'm not mistaken, the plans will come in at the end of December, and then we'll meet on the 4th to assess everything and determine that it's something we're going to go forward with, and then we go out to bid after that.
Indeed, and that's, the plans, the plans are, they're not going to be in yet, they're already formed, they'll be tweaked a little bit. And just to give you an idea of the scale of...
Probably a room full of stuff.
Well, it's quite, you know, about yea-thick for the, just for the specifications, it's, those are all the details, and I think they address things, including phasing and things like that, which will, you know, they're working on the details of those, you know, with the various trades and whatnot, you know, as we, as we get closer. I mean, there's also sets of drawings, you know, that are yea-thick. So, I don't envision our review, simply we can't do it, gets down to the nitty-gritty. What we can do is, is we can look at that high-level list and say, you know, this is what we set out to do. We set out to have X, Y, Z number of rooms in the, as we worked on in the ed specs. You know, Meredith and Greg have reviewed it and worked with it, and they've gone over these drawings, you know, up and down, and they're there. You know, those rooms are there, they're the sizes we, you know, set out to do and that. So, I think that's a little of review. So, we're going to get that, and it may even make sense to send it to the school board just as a refresher of, you know, just what we set out to do, because it's been quite a long time, and we've been sort of in this design development phase for a while now.
It's interesting to see the McGrath property no longer there, because it's sort of the first phase, not literal phase, because we have real phases, but the first part of the process really taking shape in a visible way.
Yeah, it's sort of got a mixed feeling going by it. It was a nice old property, and, but I think it's being put to a good use, and...
Yeah.
You know, so, thanks to the town for doing such a quick and nice job with that project as well.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else on a committee report?
The next thing is a financial update. Lisa, would you like to take the lead on that?
Sure. In your packet, I have a couple pages, and I did a summary by function, and, what's this pack? And I guess, well, the results, the projected at this time is good, at a positive surplus of $98,000. And the main driver, a couple of those have to do with some vacancies that haven't been filled in special ed, for example, and also change in staff in the, in the 1,100 regular ed. Number of staff changes and choices in benefit elections are creating surplus results there. Also to note is, I have projected, part of the way down the page at 2230 under technology, since we're going to be talking about that earlier, that we, right now, we're look, I'm projecting as though we will need to charge the equipment to the capital reserve, but to the extent we can absorb that, we won't need to. So, there's a deficit showing on that line of 102,000, and that was what was cut out of the budget originally. So, I'm projecting as though we're going to spend that over, but to the extent we have surpluses, we may not have to tap into that cap reserve, so I'm going to keep an eye on that.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
So, that is included in that 98,000?
Yes, in the surplus.
If we were to use that whole 100,000 for technology out of our operating budget, we'd still have a surplus of 98,000, and our capital reserve fund would remain intact.
So, that's the good news there. And part of it is, halfway down the page, 2120, we had a change in staff in the guidance area as well. One of our directors, we replaced with a, a teacher position.
Yeah, we had Mr. Padlethis retirement, and our, the counselor we hired.
So, so there's a number of surpluses offsetting those deficits, so we're in a good position of 98. I don't know if there's any questions on any specific functions, but that's where we're at right now.
So, that guidance number went into regular education?
It's 2120.
No, it's still a guidance person.
So, it's just a change in salary?
Right, correct.
Benefits or whatever.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, and there was a benefit change there as well.
Any other questions about that?
It's nothing but good news.
Yeah, watch it.
Yeah. This, again, this format is just terrific.
I'm glad it, that's very clear.
I forgot to, if I can, go back, I forgot to mention a piece of good news on my list here, it's, it's...
Speaking of good news.
Let's keep it, let's keep rolling with it. Meredith can describe the fund better than I can, but essentially, Meredith and Greg have been working...
And Jason.
And Jason, to work, working for obtaining funds from the state's security something fund.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure fund, and to the tune of...
So, we applied for roughly $630,000, I think, from that fund. The security match amount, or award amount, is estimated to be at 80%. So, we cleared our first hurdle with that, in that we were recommended for funding by committee two weeks ago, I think. I was, I don't remember, I'd have to look at my calendar to say, because I was there for that good news. And then it goes to the governor this month, and then he will recommend it to finance in January, so we could have an award notification as early as late January. Those funds will help us with some of the security upgrades that are identified in the building plan, as well as some additional pieces that weren't included, that will be very helpful to us moving forward. And just an example of that would be vestibule doors. You know, some of the security camera pieces, those kinds of items are included in that, in that project.
It's real money, so it's great.
I, just a, just a general comment on finances, you know, it seems like all the news has been good, whether it's the bond rate, which was huge, or the budget balancing the way it should, and forecasts, and grants. I know we're on a roll, and that day will change someday, but it goes to you guys, particularly the grant and the bond rate. I mean, it would not have happened without your, your hard work, so, thank you.
Lisa's doing a good job keeping an eye on all of those pieces, and again, we've got a good team putting, putting the pieces together to help us stay on track, so.
And that's the thing, I also plan to bring revenue for the next projection, because a lot of it wasn't in just yet. We get, we get a number of things in January, CAT aid, for example, but our, but we're in pretty good shape there, and to add this would be...
And there will be a day when there's some bad news. I mean, there's no, if there's no, but I guess we just kind of enjoy it.
Let's just stay put, yeah.
Thank you.
Moving into discussion items, with the board's permission, I would like to bump B before A and have Jason come up and do his one-to-one technology presentation, if that's all right? Jason, if you'd like to come up, please feel free to do so.
And while Jason's getting ready, I just want to say, Mr. Foster had intended to join us tonight, and unfortunately, needed to change his plans, so he is not able to be here. But he is our assistant principal at the junior/senior high, who also has experience with one-to-one technology as an educator, coming from his last district, and so he's been through one of these implementations before, and is a great resource for us with, in fact, the device that's being recommended to you tonight, so.
All right. So, if anyone does not know what one-to-one is, they get home, it's supplying every student with a device, piece of technology. Our, we have a couple goals, with one-to-one, in the short, we're looking to get our high school students a device. So, 9 through 12, every student, Chromebook. Longer goal, maybe within the next one or two years, we'll be looking at doing middle school as well, including fifth grade, so budget-wise, every year, we purchase Chromebooks for fifth graders and for ninth graders, roll them out in the summer, for September, August, and that would help balance the budget, too. Technology replacement schedule. In long run, we'll be looking at providing all students with a device. In the younger grades, we'll be looking at maybe carts in the rooms, they wouldn't be taking them home necessarily, but every kid would have a device, no more sharing, no more waiting on carts, chasing down carts, which is a little frustration point right Planning for this, we've done a couple of surveys, one was actually done by another district, which polled all the, all the districts in New Hampshire, just, I think there were 45 respondents, so quite a few districts, and we're close to all of them. And 63% have, currently have a one-to-one initiative, mostly at the junior/senior high school, but probably half of those actually have the elementary school students, too. Couple of local schools, Fremont, Sanborn, Exeter, Epping, Chester, Vodkendia, just to name a few. Out of all those schools, there's 65% are using Chromebooks, the rest use either a mix of iPads and Chromebooks. 50% of those schools charge a fee for insurance, either $20, $30. Usually about 10% of the device covers accidental damage, and we'd be able to purchase that device for the family. And 50% use a web filter. During the budget presentation I did, you heard me mention purchasing a web filter that would be applied to the devices, that would protect the kids at home, and would be able to filter content off-site, as well as on-site. We also did two surveys, they went out to parents, and that was to poll them on what type of devices they had, how many devices, whether or not they could bring their, let their child bring their device to school. We had some interesting numbers there, and pretty much everyone, 80% had broadband, 10% had DSL service, and 10% had cell service, and we only had 2% without internet access at home and had cellphone service home. So, another piece we put in the budget for next year was the...
Hotspots.
The mobile hotspots. And again, we identified about 2%, so either 5 or 10 hotspots should, should cover us.
That's a low number, I thought, I thought we'd be much higher than 2%.
Yeah, I mean...
So, that, we've talked about, one of the tricky parts about gauging it is that when you're putting out an electronic survey, I mean, every...
Oh, yeah.
What I will say about that, every, every family, though, at the junior/senior high has an email address. So, I mean, we, so we know that they're getting access somewhere, it may only be in their workplace and not at their household.
Right.
But we get a pretty good response rate, a response rate of about 20%, which is, you know, a little bit better than average for surveys, so...
180 respondents, and I asked probably one, one per household, and then the second survey was about 102 responses, which is, which is pretty good, if you're asking, you know, folks to take a survey, so. Our current status, we're looking at, this year in our FY '18 budget, we had 90 desktop computers up for replacement, which was a total of about $60,000. It included four computer labs. We've done one of those labs already, and we ended up saving quite a bit. I bought some off-lease equipment at one-third of the cost, so great specs, the machines are great, but we were able to save a little there, and Meredith, looking at the budget early on, said, hey, you know, actually, I'll back up. When I started here five years ago, we talked about going one-to-one in second year, third year, fourth year, talked about, talked about, but finally, this presented the opportunity, you know, to fund that initial buying. Again, $60,000, about 268 Chromebooks to get this going at the high school level. Additional costs would be the web filter, which is about $3,000, and then, actually, Matt Foster, our AP at the junior/senior high, brought the point to, we're going to want cases for these things, so it's another 4,200 bucks, so. So, our next steps, we're looking at, actually, tonight, making a recommendation to go ahead and move forward with this purchase. I will say, we did go out to bid, I did have a RFP out there for quotes on all of these Chromebooks, and we actually got some great, great pricing on them, for the Chromebooks, the licensing, the cases, some optional warranties. So, that's, that's our first step. Then we'll hold a parent informational night, either one or two. We need to draft a user agreement to borrow form, which we, we have some...
We already have a good sample drafted for you.
Yeah, yeah, all right, perfect. And then collecting the insurance fee, which we should be able to do through our...
Either our lunch or our Infinite Campus systems.
Yeah, to make it electronic, right, so we can kind of...
Now, Jason, if somebody has a challenge with that, are there going to be scholarships and things available?
Yes, we will be able to work through that piece. And I will, I will say that the fee would really be for taking the device home, so if we couldn't make that happen, we could look at keeping the device at school.
Okay.
And not taking it home. And our, ideally, we'd have this rolled out by the end of January, you know, we started this conversation back in August or September, actually, it was, yeah, maybe June, and here we are in December, so. Any, any questions?
Can I share the, I'll share your recommendation for purchase while they ask you some questions.
Jason, I'm sure you've thought about this. Does this, if you're having more devices, wireless devices in the building, is our wireless infrastructure designed... wireless infrastructure designed going forward to handle all that?
So, yeah, when we designed and installed this about three years ago, one-to-one was in mind when we played it out. So, right now, we have access points staggered between classrooms. These APs are enterprise class, it can handle up to a hundred devices, so we have plenty of coverage. We also ran spare cables to every classroom where we didn't install APs, so if we needed to add, we'd be able to do that. But, yeah, I don't see any issues with coverage or
What are some of the things, to a layperson, that students and teachers might be able to do when this is in place that they can't do now?
That'd be a great question for
I was going to say, I
We can defer that.
I think Matt can speak to that, you can speak to that from your experience in Exeter. Catherine can speak to it, I can as well, from
Like, there's all these things that we are able to do without all the paperwork, and with the smartboards, they project everything on there, they have like contests, and they're learning at the same time, you see children engaged. And this is coming from a teacher's point, I can't keep up with the kids on the computer. So, that's where you can fill in.
Sure, I think especially with the teachers, it's a very interactive program as well, having a computer where teachers can be actively commenting on your work, where I can be on my essay and my teacher can be on there also, if we're not in the same place at the same time, or if I'm in advisory, something like that. So, not only is it convenient and stuff, but it's also good for teachers to have that open communication as well.
You can be actively collaborating with peers in real time.
Yeah, for group projects and stuff like that.
The issue that I see that we've resolved is, right now, we have six carts, six Chrome carts, one laptop cart, and then a couple labs. So, unless that teacher can reserve that cart or be in that classroom, and they're always, you know, chasing down carts, trying to clear the carts.
And praying to God that they've been plugged in over the weekend.
Yeah, so this is
Or that they're not in use for assessment.
Yeah.
Sure.
During our assessment windows.
So, that's where I see the big relief. This plan right here, we've gone through and figured all the logistics and where we'd move here to and repurpose here, and with this plan right here, we're looking at still four carts that would be existing for the junior high school.
For this year.
Yeah, for this year, two downstairs, two upstairs. So, this wouldn't take anything away from them. It'd actually give them more
Yeah.
You know, I'd also add, technology is a learning tool today, right? You know, we're using it all the time, and you need it when you need it, not, oh, maybe I can get the cart tomorrow. It delays our opportunity to respond quickly, to act, you know, on a need, a conversation, a topic that comes up with our students. So, you know, we rely on these, we've relied on textbooks for years. A lot of learning happens on the web today. That is learning in 2017. Our students aren't going to be, except for occasionally, the thank you cards to grandma, writing out a lot of longhand letters and papers, they're going to be communicating digitally. And to me, this is catching up to where our students are going to be moving forward. Now, the tools may change over time, right? We know that. But this is, you know, putting the tool in the hands of our students that they're going to be using in some fashion every day for the rest of their lives.
Do they already have one at home? Is that likely?
From our survey, a lot of families had certainly more than one device in the household, but ninety percent of our families said that if they would welcome their student bringing a device home. So, that means someone else in the family might be able to use the device they already have, that it would be put to use. So, that, to us, was a really strong sign that, okay, families are going to take full advantage of these tools.
And then my other question is, I'm intrigued by this whole distance learning thing. Can I, as a student, take this home and log on to life in Indonesia and study it?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, as long as they had
I'll send you my edX, Mrs.
And if you
Sign up for a course, too.
If you log on
Signing up for nutrition.
And if you log on to something that you probably shouldn't have access to because of the web filtering that will be in place on your tool, on your device, you won't be able to access that. An alert will come up that says, this is blocked, and we'll get notification that says
There's actually some great recording there.
And that, again, you know, ten years ago, when one-to-one was rolling out, that wasn't in place. So, this, I think, for families, gives much added peace of mind that, okay, I can be comfortable that, you know, my son or daughter is bringing this device home, and less at the high school level, certainly, I think, more at the middle school level. But I can be comfortable that, you know, my child is bringing this device home, they're not going to be into things that they shouldn't be, at least on this device. And I don't have to worry about monitoring them every second and what they're using this device for. And we still will have the safety features that we have now with our Google Suite through Gaggle that sends us an alert if a student, you know, is threatening self-harm, for example, or is making a threatening comment towards a peer. Like, those kinds of safety provisions are in place for us as well, which gives us, as administrators and educators, a lot more confidence that we aren't sending our children out with tools that are going to be potentially more harmful. In fact, our experience has been generally positive with those tools.
Do you have any idea as to how many students will, for the first time, have the opportunity to have something at home? Is that, I mean, is this a really big deal for a lot of families?
Yeah, it's tough to say. I mean, our surveys, most households came back with, you know, six-plus devices. I mean, think how many devices
Right.
... damaged person carries, probably at least two or three, so.
But in that ten percent of families that have cellular access only, and the two percent that have no access at all, I mean, twelve percent of our students, this is going to be a big benefit.
Hundred and twenty stu-, oh, wait, that answers it.
I also like the responsibility piece. Because this, they, the one thing I love about our school is, our kids appreciate every little thing, because they know, they see everybody working to get things better within our school. And I really look forward to having, seeing the responsibility with our kids. And I love the fact that you're getting cases, because, again, that's an expense not all parents can afford, and
Sure.
Like, this, I think we're really setting them up for success. I really do.
Jason, thank you again for your thorough, I completed a couple of the surveys myself as a parent, so I know that they happened, and they made sense, and I appreciate that. But you always come to us with a well-thought-out, you working with Meredith and Lisa, to a concrete plan to help us move forward, and I think this is a major way for us to do it. So, thank you.
I appreciate it, because my daughter is just a little over a year in the workforce, and she has the work computer at her own computer. And when she was having to do training for work before the office opened, she had to be time-zoned around the world. She had to depend on her home Wi-Fi to operate. And the first morning, she panicked because it wasn't working on Monday morning at five fifteen in the morning. And so, our students are going to be in a situation where they have to work on those things, and they have to be responsible and understand that they are responsible for that. It's good practice.
So, the other document I passed out is the, or a draft, anyway, we're not asking you to approve that tonight, but the Chromebook Use Agreement, which, again, would be if a family wants to take the device home, they'll pay essentially an insurance fee to the district, and then would complete this form. And again, we've looked at a number of districts' forms and some of the tools. This is an advantage of not being one of the first, is that there are a lot of great models out there. So, this is modeled after Hanover High School. But we looked at their usage agreement, we think it's very clear and written in pretty user-friendly language, so you understand what you're signing on for by agreeing to take this device home.
And it does put the onus back on the student in terms of, this is my, this is my object for which I am responsible.
That's right. If I lose it, I need to tell someone that it's missing. If I drop it, I need to tell someone that I dropped it. And again, in the workplace, it's on you, right?
Absolutely.
It says, we're responsible for irreparable damage, total cost minus the insurance fee. What is that, that's a deductible? Let's say the thing's worth five hundred bucks, or?
So, the estimate on the device is in that other sheet that I sent down, which now I'm not going to be able to read because I passed it down.
About two-twenty-three.
Yeah, sorry.
Two-eighty-fifty.
Two-twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
Which is, yeah, which is great pricing, because, you know, by any volume, you save about twenty-five dollars.
And we're looking essentially at a twenty to thirty-dollar annual fee to take the device home. That device, essentially, at the end of four years, becomes your device, because that's about the shelf life for us of those devices. So, for that eighty dollars over four years, essentially, or a hundred and twenty, wherever we kind of land with that, that becomes your device to take home at the end of that time period.
And if I
If you break it
Drive over it?
If you drive over it, then you're going to be paying two-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars minus whatever you've already contributed to that user fee. So, and we'll give you a replacement device.
It's cumulative.
Correct.
Gotcha. So, first year, it's a big
One great feature about Chromebooks
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it, you know, if the device does fail, we take one off our, you know, our shelf in our shop, hand it out, they log in, change it in inventory, and they're good to go.
And again, if the, if the parents aren't comfortable with it, if you know your kid loses everything, you can say, it's staying in school.
Absolutely.
Until you're responsible. So, I think that's going to be made clear as well, right?
And they can, to Jason's, but I think what you're trying to get at is they, everything will be on like Google, so you're not having stuff on your desktop, so you can pick up any one, really, and just log in and get to your content.
We'll also have these set, and our current Chromebooks are the same way, where you can only log in with your new market account. So, they're used for schoolwork.
Related question to what we were talking about, I'm just thinking, I know other teenagers who might be on Instagram or Facebook or what, are those things going to be like, those can be distracting, will those be accessible, or is that another discussion?
We'll have to, exactly, figure that piece out. What I'd recommend doing is mirroring what we currently block in districts, includes Facebook and Unsaferi.
So, I, this is how smart the kids are. I'm doing a report on zombies right now with one of my students, and so I'm trying to find zombie videos, and I can't, I can't get, I can't get into anything.
Really?
Don't you know, I just had to look at the teenager next to me, I'm like, figure this out for me, and there I had them. They know, they know how to bypass it all, so that has to be
Yeah, there's proxy servers out there.
So, you've got to be on your toes all the time.
Yeah, so this, the filtering service we're looking at is pretty, very popular right now, designed for Chromebooks, and they look for those proxy-avoiding sites, so.
I have no idea what that is, all I know is
I think
So, get a report.
Chromebooks as well, it's also safer, like, I know that phones, it's easier, because a lot of smartphones already come with VPNs and proxy servers
Sure.
That you can turn on, like, my phone can turn on its own VPN, but with Chromebooks, it's kind of different.
Yeah, they figure it out.
I find them safer than phones.
And as I'm sitting here, I have no idea what a VPN is, so obviously, the youth are beyond us, so I am grateful for this opportunity for them to have this technology.
Thank you, Kim.
Any other questions? Now, Jason, how long will it take for us to get these? If and when we, you know, assuming this is something we proceed with, how long will it take? Is that end of December, end of January timeline reasonable?
Is it?
So, Jason's thought was that if the board were to act on this tonight, that we'd order it in the next week, and that would put us well on track to be able to have those in place for late January. But if you want to wait a couple of weeks to have time to review all the information, that's also okay. You know, at most, it's going to delay it by a couple of weeks, and truthfully, we need to make sure all the other pieces are in place, which include like the payment portal piece of this, which we're
I asked the board if we would like to proceed with moving on this, or we need more, if we need more time.
Move ahead.
Alright.
Okay. Then, I seek a motion to approve the proposal for one-to-one technology that Jason has presented this evening.
So, moved.
Second.
A motion for Ms. McKinney, a second for Ms. Alberg, to approve the one-to-one technology proposal presented tonight. Any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much. We'll be back with an update.
Please keep us, we like to hear what happens, so let us know.
We'll have some students give the update
Yes, we will! And I might learn what VPN is.
Catherine's available for tutoring.
I would have to ask her.
We talked about that, having the kids tutor at the studio center, like, what a great opportunity that would be.
Volunteer hours, and just doing good stuff, and being good citizens. It's so exciting! Alright, moving along. Meredith, would you like to proceed with presenting the proposed, the draft calendar?
Certainly. So, to go with your draft calendar, is another document, these are the State Department of Ed regulations about school year. So, I thought I would start with that. This is a two-sided document, so we're starting on the side that says Ed 30618, school year.
Two-sided.
So, under the RSAs, we have to have in each elementary school, a school year of at least nine-hundred-and-forty-five hours. It does give you the option for half that time for kindergarten. That's not where we are, we have full-day kindergarten. At the middle and high school level, a school year of at least nine-hundred-and-ninety hours of instructional time, and that includes seven and eight, grade seven and eight. At the elementary school, your school day can't be more than five and three-quarters of an hour long. And at the junior senior high, it can't be more than six hours long. And in both schools, you have to have sixty more hours built into your calendar, thirty of which are essentially for snow days or other emergency days, and the other thirty are the minimum for teacher professional days. So, if you flip to the other side, the calendar that is in your packet proposes a move for this district from a days' calendar, which we have had, to an hours' model for 2018, 2019. At the junior senior high school, again, required nine-hundred-and-ninety hours of instruction plus thirty additional hours in case of weather or other emergencies. So, our proposed calendar reflects a hundred-and-seventy-five school days for students, or a total of one-thousand-and-fifty hours. And at the elementary school, the proposed calendar, again, reflects a hundred-and-seventy-five school days or one-thousand-six-and-a-quarter hours.
So, we're losing seven days?
So, we would be losing in this proposal six days, but if you look at our existing calendar, we also have four early release days built into our calendar, which are essentially two instructional, the equivalent of two instructional days. So, really, we'd be going from one-seventy-nine to one-seventy-six in terms of student instructional time. For a couple of reasons, I am recommending this move. One, we have a lot of initiatives to include, the one you've just approved this evening, with one-to-one technology on our plate as a district. Competency-based education, which we'll be talking more about in January, where the standards-based grading piece, which is attached to that, some big, big rocks, moving us towards that more personalized learning that you, as a board, have talked about. So, having additional days to work with teachers on those initiatives, and for teachers to work together on those initiatives, I think is a huge benefit that we aren't going to be able to find through substitutes, which we can't find anyway, or without disruption to student learning. The other advantage to us, at least in the short term, is that we are going to be under construction, and under heavy construction through the next summer. We are going to be on a pretty tight timeline, as it is, pushing for that start, and starting in August, as opposed to the day after Labor Day with students. My concern would be if we get to crunch time, I don't want to be telling parents, you know, on the twentieth of August, that, by the way, we're not going to be ready to open the following week. I feel much more comfortable knowing this, this would be our start time, at least for the next school year. And again, this, I, this is out And again, this, I, this is out only right now as a draft for some feedback. The proposed professional development days for teachers, those six days, three of them would happen prior to the start of school in the last week of August. One right now would remain where it has been traditionally in October. One is proposed on the primary or election day in November. So what I've heard from the town clerk is there's some concern that it could be a busy primary year. We won't be able to have people vote at the junior, senior high because of construction. We won't be able to provide access to the gymnasium in an easy way or provide easy parking. So if we need to use the schools to vote, we'd be using the elementary school. And for security reasons, I don't want the elementary school open as a polling place while we have five hundred students there.
And the whole driving bit.
And so, so we proposed both the November and March election days as workshop days. The other two days that Amy mentioned, again, all, all of this is open for discussion and feedback, were proposed in November, thinking that we, we do have, and I, I did not run the attendance report for this year. And I will, I will do that for you prior to the next meeting. But that week of Thanksgiving, we often have students who miss particularly the Tuesday, in some cases, the Monday and the Tuesday for the Thanksgiving holiday. So trying to sort of think about when might it already be a convenient time for families if we were putting those days together? So we did propose two days the week of Thanksgiving. So there would be no school for students that entire week. But again, we don't want to further disrupt continuity of education. So we're certainly open to suggestions for other, other time periods for these days. But this is the conceptual model. Again, it is five fewer days than are currently in our calendar. But if you look at our early release days, and we've proposed no early release days in this proposal, it really would be a change of three fewer instructional days for students. But we're gaining six days with our teachers, which, which to me is a, a very big win.
And we, and we've talked about this because we knew with construction, this was going to be an issue. So this does not have to be a permanent solution. We can do this.
Right.
Roll it out, see how it works. And next year when we do this again, you know, we can say, we can see the difference. Two years, if we see a huge difference, you know, obviously, we can scrap it. But I think, I agree with Meredith with the construction. I don't want to have to, we've been there. We've been there when we thought this would never, one more painting the day before school starts.
And I think also, you know, one of the things we've talked about in, in the budget process and before is the, the reduction in, in professional development funding and the fact that we're going to have to maximize the time and the dollars. And so I think with the initiatives that Meredith talked about and the things, the new reading program that's been proposed and all those different things, it's going to benefit the students greatly to have these, I feel, additional professional development days.
Exactly.
I'm not going to say that. But anyway, I think it would benefit people.
From a total outsider's standpoint, it sounds like teaching the teacher is going to be regardless of facility construction or it's a good, it's a good move is what you're suggesting.
That is, yeah, that is my opinion. I think we have a lot of things for teachers to wrap their arms around and very limited time in which to do that. And if we really want to make good progress as a district on some of these, again, really big, important pieces, then giving teachers sustained time to do work together is important.
So that, that should really, again, might just carry the day regardless of, of, of the other. And, and I, I normally would not think this would be a great idea. But I've heard so much about the quality of the professional development you're doing. I mean, I've heard it in the past and I wasn't quite sure whether it was really, you know what I mean?
Yes.
But I mean, you're, everybody's working hard at it and it's substantive and it's, it's quantitative. And so I, I think it makes.
Again.
I have no reason to think it would be anything but great.
If it doesn't work, we just don't do it next year. You know, if it, if there's an issue, if we, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
So I would suggest we leave it on the table through the next meeting. I can provide the data on sort of absences or where we see, we can run it in terms of where we see sort of peak absenteeism as a, as another frame. We can bring that to you at the next meeting. But I'd suggest we leave it out for parent comment, public review.
Yep.
And, and we'll call that out to people's attention to try to get some input before you make a decision in January.
This November, wasn't it similar to this calendar as well?
So we certainly had, I don't have it in front of me.
I called it No School November because it literally.
I think we just.
We always have Veterans Day in Thanksgiving.
We had, I think there was a professional development.
I think I did an extra.
Did you?
I think I had, I think Tuesday.
Ah, maybe so.
I didn't have to, or the kids didn't.
On the web, on the website.
I know, I'm trying to get there.
We were in school fifteen days.
Oh, wow.
Extra was fifteen days in school for November. I can put it up for you.
Hmm.
So I'm assuming the teachers have already looked at this or is this what you're anticipating this period of time they're going to look at?
So, yeah, they're just receiving it as well. We, this draft has just been finalized this week. So it gives them an opportunity to comment. We certainly shared it with Amy. So we want, yep, their feedback and.
I think that's the important part, too, get their feedback and see how they're feeling.
Yeah.
And students.
Yes.
Except those who are graduating. But you can ask other students.
All right. Any other questions about the calendar? Moving along, the next thing on the agenda is the policy FEH supervision of construction. Again, very timely with the building top.
So this is the board's existing policy, FEH, and we call it to your attention because we're getting closer to the start of this project. I know that at one of our recent building committee meetings, one of our building committee members suggested, maybe we didn't need to have a clerk of the works, but maybe that's a role our facilities director could fill. You know, that's certainly something for this board to consider. I will say that it's a forty million dollar project. And spending a hundred thousand dollars to have another person available to provide oversight, to me, is, is a small investment in, in making sure that not only do our existing operations run smoothly, both on the town and school side, which is the role of our current facilities director, but also that we have someone whose only focus is on the building project. Our facilities director will be doing a great job keeping an eye on the building project. I have no doubt about that. But, but my personal feeling is that we should also look at having a clerk of the works who can provide that additional layer of support to us. But I put this out for you as a first read for consideration. Again, no action tonight, but we'll, we'll look at this at a future meeting.
And I, I for one believe that that is completely the correct thing to do in terms of having a fresh, a sole set of eyes, which is what's been in the, in the discussion since the beginning of the facilities discussion. So assuming that we choose to hire this person, when does that happen in the timeline of things?
So we are right now still projecting to break ground in April. April is largely the preliminary site work. Certainly, I would think we'd want someone on board before the summer, before we are under the heavy, heavy construction. But I think we begin looking in February, early February. You know, as soon as we kind of get bids back on the project itself, that we begin advertising for a clerk of the works. But we certainly could, could do that sooner or later at the board's pleasure.
I think it's probably necessary to. I'd like to see a really clear definition of responsibility. Particularly as it relates to the director of facilities and the clerk of the works and who's really approving what and what's the scope of judgment that the clerk works. Because I don't, personally, I don't understand it yet.
Communication, it would be the huge thing for me. Just make sure that all that is communicated so that we know and we can explain it to other people. Because they'll be, why are we hiring the clerks of the works when we have that facilities director? So I want that, this is why we're hiring this person and this is what the job's going to be and this is what it will entail.
It's, it's a complex project for a lot of reasons. You've got two buildings going on at the same time. You've got renovations. You've got, you've, you've got phasing. You're dealing, you know, having to deal with, you know, folks that are there and making sure everybody's complying with the phasing requirements. And Ekman will do, you know, they're a good job at that, I'm sure, too. But to have this independent, and you know, and it's a different relationship. It's a contractual relationship versus an employee relationship, which is, you know, an important distinction, too. And I'm just confessing that I've never been involved in hiring one. But I'm just thinking that it may be sooner than later in, in the process because that person would probably want to get up to speed on, on the drawings and the effects and, you know, the players and all that stuff. And so, but I, yeah, I agree with your points, too.
And a job description, talking about what kind of education experience we're going to ask of this person. And I, I don't want to drop a bomb here. But I, I know through discussions that we're going to be working on the dam project. And I know who they're talking about in terms of that project. And that's right around the corner as well. I think Greg's going to be asked to do some daily heavy lifting.
Greg is basically half, half ours and half the towns?
In a, sort of two-thirds, one-third, but yeah. Theory, theory.
But not full-time ours.
Correct, not full-time ours.
And that's a really good point. That's a really good point.
Yep.
And this is, I would believe that the full-time with correct job description and delineated things.
No question.
Because we are talking about a forty billion dollar situation for all intents, at all the points, mics. I mean, it's, it's an enormous.
I just think we ought to be prepared. I think prudent planning is, is sort of like an all-hands-on-deck mentality. Because you don't, you know, when you go into one of these things, you know, with a renovation, I mean, we've done a lot of due diligence. But things, things can come up. And, and, you know, each person's going to have to play a role. There'll be an informational role. I'm sure parents will have questions about phasing and, you know, and teachers will and all this. So, you know, people have to be freed up to do their appropriate jobs.
And the job they're doing now.
Our facilities director's going to have to, whatever we discover in that building, that's his job to take care of. And the clerks and the works needs to focus on the construction itself.
It'll, it's, somebody's going to have to really think that through. And, and, but yes.
Sounds like a fun job.
With the right skill set, I'm sure it is, actually. Yeah, there are people out there who specialize in doing this work. But we will bring those requested documents to you for your meeting on the twenty-first.
Perfect.
Try to get that out to you ahead of time so that you have time to review.
We have them working for Newmarket Properties. We call them site supervisors. But they are the absolute eyes and ears, watching the bulldozer doing its work. And I don't think there's any questions as to whether we need it. We've just got to get the leaders.
Perfect. Moving into action items, the next item on the list of the default budget. Lisa, I'm, are you going to take?
Pass it on. Start with page two, actually.
Yeah, so.
At the top of it. Once they get passed out.
Yep. So last year, we, the advantage of your board chair, I think, who is also a finance person for our school district in his professional life, who sort of shared with us the way the default budget had been done in the past. And we brought that to the board and, and moved that forward. This year, in the absence of that person, we went back through historically how his Newmarket approached the default budget and looked at some of that data. And then we, we've put that together for you. So if you start, not on that first summary page, but on the second page, with the definition of a default budget. The default budget, I won't read it for you at the risk of belaboring, belaboring it. But then, so we took that definition and then applied the, the legal requirements. The operating budget authorized for the previous year reduced in increase by debt service contracts, other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget. And so as we looked historically, and Lisa can walk you through some of the specifics. But as we looked historically, Newmarket, when there had been position reductions from operating your budget to proposed budget, those positions had been left in the operating budget. And we looked at a couple of different years where that, that was the case. And so we, again, we followed that format. But again, the law is very clear that what your default looks like is at the discretion of the governing body. So we've, we've proposed it to you based on what we found to historically have been done here. But it is ultimately your discretion about how you'd like to proceed. So.
So then we'll turn to the top page, the summary page. And, and the default budget always starts with the prior year's adopted budget. So fiscal year eighteen is the baseline budget. The second column, fiscal year 2019, is there just for informational purposes. It, it is not really part of the default budget development. So from there, you take your baseline and you do the projections on what is necessary for contractual things such as personnel benefits. So those estimates are projected from the baseline into the default. And the third column shows the default at twenty million, eight, one, nine, two, fifty-nine. And that includes the additional debt that has to go in and as well as any, any current, current staffing projections. So when you look at the difference of the proposed budget versus the default, you'll see that it's two hundred thousand dollars higher. But if you look at the baseline to the default, it's two million dollars higher. And the primary thing is the, is the bond. Yep.
So if, yeah, in that difference column.
Oh, and so the main, yeah, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, many of those are personnel. But we also, for example, pulled out the reading, proposed reading program because that wasn't a proposal in your budget last year. That's a new expenditure. So that's removed from this calculation. The ten thousand dollars of additional funds for professional development is removed from this calculation because that previously was contained in grant funds. So you, that's kind of how you walk through this process. The proposed truck lease for facilities is removed from the default budget. So that's, that's how we arrived at this proposal. Again, historically, what seems to have been done here.
And so the form that goes in really is the, you take the baseline budget plus the two million dollars to get you to the twenty million. But I thought if I just showed you the difference from the fiscal year eighteen, you wouldn't really see what the changes were. So the last column is what goes on the official form. But the second and last column from the right is your difference from what you originally proposed. Just for point of information.
Is that the proposed budget doesn't get passed at the town vote in March, then, then the default budget by violation of the law becomes your budget?
Correct.
Which in this case and others is higher.
Yes.
It's kind of odd.
It typically had, you know, from a, a voting perspective, it typically has been.
I was going to ask that. I thought, I'd seen that too, and I'm not used to doing it except for the last four.
I remember going to one of the meetings and somebody voting for the default budget. And I, I think it was my first year and I was like, well, why would you want to do that? It was you, Al, wasn't it?
So when is the union contract up?
End of next year.
End of eighteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Oh, so this, so this includes the negotiated.
Correct. Yeah.
Because I remember last time, we didn't know what it was and we had to put in an estimate.
A couple of years ago, you've heard that.
So that would be.
Okay. So these are, yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Any other questions about this?
So we will need to adopt.
To adopt the default.
Committee for.
At the twenty million, eight, one, nine, two, fifty-nine number.
I seek a motion to approve the default budget in the amount of twenty million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So moved.
Second.
And a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Mr. Kennison to approve the default budget of twenty million, eight, nineteen, two, fifty-nine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll move to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll see. The next thing is the approval of the minutes, public and non-public from, no, just public. From, I believe, yes, from our, our November sixteenth meeting.
Because it's non-public.
Yes. I don't see. Oh, yes, there are. Thank you. Public and non-public. I seek a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
So, moved.
Second.
A motion from Ms. McKinnney, a second from Mr. Kennison. Are there any amendments to said minutes? Hearing none, let's move to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. The next item is the approval of the manifests, which I think Elizabeth might have.
I make a motion to approve the manifest stated 12/7/17, and the total amount of $1,408,105.89 and 88 cents.
On a motion from Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. Alberg, to accept the minutes of, not minutes, manifests of 12/7/17. All those in favor?
Aye.
Manifest approved. The next couple of things are some approval of donations. The first one is a donation from the Greenland Veterans for $500 for school supplies for the Special Education Department. Awesome. Thank you. I seek a motion, we can accept them all under one motion, correct?
Sure.
Okay. The next one is, yes.
Can we explain these two?
Please do.
So, we have two additional grants. One is what's called the Argosy First Robotics Competition Rookie Grant for $4,000, and the second is the First in New Hampshire Grants for $6,500. Both of those grants have been awarded to us to start a robotics team, and I want to thank David Tong and Devon Helmke, who are high school teachers for submitting those applications. And our robotics team is off and running already, and registered for its first competition. So, that will be an exciting development for us this year, and we're anxious to see how we do.
I seek a motion to gratefully, I added that little adjective there, accept the three donations as listed. So, moved. On a motion from, thank you, on a motion from Ms. McKinnney, a second from Mr. Zink. Is there any discussion? Thank you, to these organizations that provided us with these funds.
I'm not sure, yeah.
Hearing nothing else, we move to vote to accept these donations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. The next thing is, just a reminder of a couple of dates. The next regular school board meeting is December 21st at 7:00 p.m., and Town Hall Chambers, a regular business meeting. The budget committee will meet next Monday, the 11th, at 7:00, in the Town Hall Auditorium. Lisa will present the default budget to them then. The overall operating budget was presented last week, and we'll follow through with that. On the 13th, at 6:00, there is the building committee meeting at 6 o'clock, correct?
Correct.
And then, after that, the next meeting for us will be the joint meeting with the building committee at 5:00 p.m. downstairs in the auditorium, and then we'll follow that joint meeting with the school board, regular business meeting that same evening.
January.
January. Did I say February?
You didn't even say something.
One of these crazy months. January 4th, 2018, which is a little bit crazy.
Everybody's good for the 4th, by the way.
Does that work for everyone, the 4th, at 5:00? Check it out.
Does.
I'll send out a reminder. Anything else? We need to go into non-public. I seek a motion to go into non-public session under RSE 91A32C. So, moved.
Second.
On a motion from Ms. McKinnney, a second from Mr. Zink, to go into non-public. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. Alberg?
Aye.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKinnney?
Yes.
And we're in at 8:15. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Ms. McKinnney, and Al Zink. I'm going to say yes. What is today, 7:00? No, it's not.